Okay, um, Deanie does, did Deanie talk to you about Frederick?
Yeah.
Okay. So, are you okay moving it back?
I have no problem moving it back, but I like it back there. It's more.
Okay. All right. We'll take care of it. We just need Mark Copeng.
There is he.
Right there. Everybody ready? All right, good evening and welcome to the Federway City Council meeting for November 5th of 2019. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Presentation of Colors by the Federway High School Junior ROTC presented by Sergeant Smith to present the colors.
Forward, march. Colors. Oh, ready, sir.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ares, colors. Colors, turn, forward, march.
All right, thank you. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you.[255.12][255.12](applause). And once again, that was the Federway High School Junior ROTC. Thank you very much. All right. Um, all right, first, we'll have the swearing in of new police officers. Chief Wong.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, members of the council. It's my pleasure to introduce to you and to our citizens the newest members of the Federway Police Department. First, we have Officer Chad Smith. Officer Smith is an entry-level police officer. Chad graduated from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy on October 11th and is currently signed to the field training program. Chad was born and raised in Southern California and has served in the United States Army for seven years. He is still active member of the Army Reserves. Chad earned his Bachelor of Science in Aviation Management from Southern Illinois University, and Associate Degree in Science and Commercial Flight from Mount San Antonio College. Chad is a licensed pilot. Joining him tonight is his wife, Brittany. Brittany, if you want to wave, they're very excited to be part of the City of Federway family. Next, we have Officer Zach Williams. Officer Williams is also an entry-level police officer. Zach graduated from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy on October 11th and is currently in the field training program. Zach was born and raised in Olympia, Washington, which is my hometown as well. Prior to becoming a police officer, Zach worked for the Aberdeen Police Department as a corrections officer. Zach previously worked in loss prevention with Home Depot and Walmart. Joining him tonight is his, um, uh, mother, Wendy Bullard, and his longtime girlfriend, Nicole. Okay? Next, we have Zachary Roxeth. Officer Roxeth is a lateral experienced police officer. Zach previously worked for us and is a returning officer. In a weak moment, Zach decided to join his family in California, uh, family business, but he missed his police work and wanted to return. We're very fortunate to have Zach return with us. Prior to joining our department, Zach worked for the University of Washington Police Department. Zach has a Bachelor of Arts degree in business. Prior to beginning his law enforcement career, he worked for various positions at Trader Joe's and Boeing. Joining him tonight is his husband, Peter. Peter, how are you? Where are you? There he is. Okay, next, we have Officer Stephen Friedrich. Officer Friedrich is a lateral experienced police officer. Stephen started his law enforcement career as a community service officer with a Narragansett Police Department in Rhode Island. He then served in the Rhode Island Army National Guard in the position of military police officer and position of materials handler. Prior to coming to the Federway Police Department, Stephen was employed with the New Orleans Police Department. Steve attended Community College in Rhode Island studying law enforcement. Please join me in welcoming the newest members of the Police Department.[466.81][466.81](applause). Gentlemen, if I could have you come to the podium.
Gentlemen, please you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Chad Roxeth.
Do so and miss where.
Do so and miss where.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I'm a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Federway.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Federway.
And will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
In and for the City of Federway.
In and for the City of Federway.
In King County, Washington.
In King County, Washington.
And as such duties as prescribed by law.
And such duties prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
It's always great to see new careers get started and careers continue as well. So, congratulations, officers. We wish you all the best and we're very proud of you. So, and I know your family is too. Okay, um, now, something very near and dear to our hearts, and my heart especially, is the 30th anniversary of Ashley House. And we've got Stephen Freeborn, Board President, and Ken Maas, CEO. If you gentlemen can come up to the podium, I will read the proclamation for the 30-year anniversary and then we'll give you an opportunity to say a few words. Proclamation, Ashley House. I cannot believe it's been 30 years since the, isn't that crazy? 30 years, you know, actually, the City of Federway is going to have a 30-year birthday here, coming up here in just a couple of months. Whereas Ashley House was established in 1989 to provide compassionate care to medically fragile children, youth, and young adults, and whereas Ashley House has provided this care to more than 800 children, youth, and their families, and whereas in addition to this administrative office in Federway, Ashley House has homes in Auburn, Northeast Tacoma, Edgewood, Kent, and Olympia, and whereas Ashley House has continued to grow and expand the number of children, youth, and young adults in its care who are coping with the challenges of a catastrophic injury, serious illness, and congenital birth defect, and whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize the ongoing work of nursing staff, clinical staff, occupational therapists, and other staff, as well as volunteers who support and care for medically fragile children in our communities. Now, therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and the city council members of the City of Federway, do hereby proclaim November 14th, 2019, as a day to celebrate Ashley's House 30th anniversary in the City of Federway and encourage all citizens to join together to get back to the community in a way that is personally meaningful. Sign this 5th day of November, 2019. And I'll come down.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Should we get a picture?
Sure.
Sir. Absolutely. All right. Put it in the middle.
Ready. Ready.
Okay, please do. All right, here, if I may. You guys want to say a few words?
Yes. Yes. My name's Steve Freeborn. I've been a resident of Federway since 1984, and I have a share of law practice with my wife, Sue Freeborn. We live over by Redondo. What started Ashley House was a, uh, a, not a great thing from us, our standpoint. Our first child was born in 1987 with a host of birth defects that ultimately took his life when he was three years old. There was a lot of struggles at that time. Uh, you know, basically, there was nothing that the hospitals provided that could help with this transition from the hospital to home, other than goodbye and good luck. And, uh, we figured that there's got to be a better way to, um, care for these children and also to help the parents go through, um, some very difficult time and make them so they can understand that they too can, uh, care for their children in a home-like environment. So, we started with our first home in Enham Claw and we've expanded from there and we now have nine homes in the area, and they're all homes that look like, uh, a home that you or I would live in, and I think most of us would love to live in one of these homes, the way we've decorated them, but, um, and we hope these parents understand that, uh, you can do it at home, you can care for these kids and, uh, and not have to have them institutionalized or anything like that. So, right now, we've got a big project going with children's up in Shoreline. We've acquired a new piece of property up there. They gave us seed money of $1.5 million to get this program going. We just got a call from, um, the hospital in Spokane, Washington, this past week, and they want us to start a program over there too, and they're in the process of fundraising as we speak to try to get a home purchase for us to send our program over there. It is a great program. It's been an honor to be, uh, on the board of Ashley House for the last 30 years since its inception. We do have a, um, a anniversary party coming up on the 14th of November that's open to all. It's at the Community Performing Arts Center here in Federway and from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And, uh, we'd love to have all of you come and learn a little bit more about Ashley House, the children, the families, and, um, hopefully, maybe we can, uh, get you excited enough that you might want to serve on the board or maybe make a donation. But again, thank you very much. Thank you to the City of Federway for recognizing us, and, uh, we hope to be in this Federway community for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.[861.12][861.12](applause).
I'll just very quickly say, I'm Ken Mays, Executive Director. I've been with Ashley House for seven years. I've been in social services for about 45. This is the best place I've ever worked, and it's because of the kids. Kids come to, sick kids come to Ashley House to thrive, and medical professionals come to create miracles every day. They have taught me so many things since I've been with Ashley House. I've never heard our kids complain about their situations. Uh, they, they know what's important in life, and that's to be loved and to be around people who care about them. So, I hope you can make it on the 14th. I'm going to leave some invitations here and hopefully they can get it out to you. Thank you very much for this honor. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Stephen and Ken.[905.82][905.82](applause). I'll be there along with, I'm sure, many of my colleagues up here, and it is, when you really think about the impact that you've had in the community, it's just absolutely astonishing, and to see that number of 800, and but just to know the ripple, uh, the ripple effects and all of the great things you've done, we, when did you, when did you open the, uh, the office space on Ninth Avenue?
That was, uh, three years ago.
Yeah, boy, that just seems like just yesterday now. And it's, it's great to have you there and, you know, we had a great open house, or you had a great open house there. And so, we look forward to that event. Uh, what time on the 14th again at the PAC?
6:00 to 8:00.
6:00 to 8:00, okay. So, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, we're going to put this on our Facebook page and make sure that it's out there.
Food, champagne, cake.
Very good. Okay. Well, thanks again, Stephen and Ken. Thank you very much. Okay, um, all right, certificates of appointment. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I'm not sure if I'm seeing Mike Dunwitty, Madalina Miller, or Vicki. Is Vicki here? Okay. Um, well, I'm going to thank them in advance for their service, look forward to working with them, and I will, uh, present the certificates to, uh, Ms. Stephanie Courtney, our city clerk, and she'll take care of the rest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, Arts Commission, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is Kenny Byrne here, by any chance? No? Okay. So, I would also like to extend my, um, thanks to Kenny Byrne. He'll be, uh, joining the Arts Commission, and I'll, I'll leave his certificate of appointment with our city clerk as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Mayor's Emerging Issues in Report. Uh, we've got the Veterans Day Celebration at Todd Beamer High School. That's this Saturday on November 9th at 3:00 PM. Certainly hope you can make it. It's a, just a great event that's put on, um, every year, and, uh, I know that it's the, um, Federway Historical Society and it's also the Kiwanis as well, the Kiwanis Organization and the, um, Federway Historical Society, um, and, again, Todd Beamer High School. The featured speaker, the keynote speaker is going to be State Representative Christina Reeves, and she's going to be talking about her work with, on behalf of the state, with our veterans and with regard to economic development, and she's becoming quite an expert at that. And then, um, there are going to be quite a number of speakers as well. I believe I'll say a few words as well. So, it's something that, that we all look forward to, and it's just a great event with singing groups and, and, um, and the performers with the Junior ROTC. So, um, hope you can make that. Um, and we also, um, I'll, I'll talk about another Veterans Day event in just a few moments. Okay, um, these are recent events that have occurred here in the City of Federway. The Aerospace Futures Alliance had their 14th Annual Aerospace Summit on October 16th. The Multi-Service Center Helps Luncheon was on October 17th, down at, um, at the, what's that called? What's that? Emerald Downs, thank you. Um, sounds like, I'm just kidding. Um, at Emerald Downs, that was very nice, and it was a great speaker. South King County Census Table, talking about plans for the census, was on the 24th. Federway Commander Chris Norman's Retirement Celebration was on, um, October 25th. Boy, this, so many things have been happening, we had to put this in a scroll. Um, and so, uh, you know, Chris Norman had been, I think, 37 years in, in law enforcement and, and 23 of those with the City of Federway. We had a Thriller Flash Mob, um, at the Farmer's Market on 1026. That was a lot of fun and something that we're going to hopefully see next year. And, um, special meeting regarding the Homeless Task Force Recommendations on October 28th. That was at, um, uh, that was at the Tukwila Community Center and, and representatives from King County and representatives from many of the Sound Cities Association cities were there, talking about this, um, actually, that was, uh, we, the council had a special meeting regarding Homeless Task Force Recommendations, but there was also a, uh, King County Regional Homelessness Authority Discussion on 1025, and then this council had a special meeting regarding the Homelessness Task Force Recommendations, and numerous recommendations came out of that. Upcoming events, we've got the Reach Out Breakfast a few days from now on November 7th at Journey Church. We've got the South King Fire and Rescue Al Chiefs Retirement Celebration on November 8th, uh, that's this Friday. Federway Chamber Gala at the Woodbridge Corporate Park Headquarters on November 9th. That's the former IRG Headquarters, excuse me, the former Warehouser Headquarters. Veterans Day Celebration at the Brookdale Foundation House on November 11th. I believe that starts at about 10:00 AM on that, on the actual holiday. And, um, that's my report. Then we move on to Council Committee Reports. Uh, first, we've got Finance with Councilmember Dukla.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a meeting on Tuesday, October 22nd, 4:30. We approved the minutes. Uh, we had a, we had a lot of discussion on different items, so I'll just explain. Surplus of Public Works and Parks vehicles were presented by the Public Works Department, um, and, um, and they were just kind of switching them so that they could keep something going and not have to go out and spend more money, and the truck is still being utilized by the Parks Department also. They were proposing to surplus Parks Truck 1211 and transfer Public Works 82281 to the parks. This will result in the same number of total vehicles, as was previously approved by the council, and no additional reserves will be collected for the other truck. We also, uh, I think that was pretty much it. We surplus the vehicles through the state and they're setting, they set the price, we would get anywhere between $1,000 to $2,500, and it would be mostly used for parts. You confirm the vehicles go to the annual Department of Transportation's sacred, uh, inspection, and so we forwarded that to the consent agenda for this meeting. There was a PAC update presented by the Community Relations Liaison Contract, Autumn Gressit and PAC General Manager Brian Wilson stated that they were here to propose the 2020 Federway PAC budget. There is some information in front of you and this spectrum process, and they are looking for feedback and anything that we can provide. Councilman Tran, uh, inquired as to what the 169,000 capital outlay is, and Mr. Hoffman explained that approximately 95% is for a national marketing campaign. Marketing typically has done, been done by, by event basis, and what they're looking at is Spectra's resources and national regional event planners and small marquees, meeting places, and just advertising the building and venue as a whole for the PAC. And the Deputy Mayor Honda and Councilmember Safadassan asked, asked a few questions for more clarification, and this item was for information purposes only, no action was taken. The next was the Budget Amendment Ordinance, which was presented by the account, our accounting manager, Chase Donnelly, and, uh, I believe that this will be coming before us for, for approval. Uh, there was once some clarification regarding the PAC budget that was being asked. One, one area showed that, uh, 1,701,417, and another showed 800,000. PAC staff would like, like clarification on the amount. Mr. Donnelly explained we are funding 800,000 out of the general fund as a subsidy for the 2020 budget. Mr. Hoffman stated that he doesn't want to fall short and have to come back to the council to ask for additional funding. Mr. Donnelly stated that we are starting with 800,000. That is what we were able to fund in the adjustment to keep the required reserve fund balance policy. It was decided that the PAC and the finance staff will talk to find a, will talk to find out a, find a solution. And then there was a 2020 Property Tax Levy Ordinance was presented by the accounting manager, Chase Donnelly. He gave a brief overview of the proposed 2020 Property Tax Levy Ordinance. There will be a public hearing on the 2020 proposed levy, but will be based on the 1%, increased limit plus new construction. Based on the preliminary information from King County's, this would result in a decrease in the tax rate from 0.97655 to approximately 0.93395 per 1,000 of assessed value. Uh, and this was going from first reading, uh, to the November 19, 29 council meeting. And we went through the vouchers and, and motion was made by Councilmember Tran to forward the September vouchers to the November 5th 29 consent agenda. And then the monthly financial report was given to us. Community development permits and fees were above year-to-date budget, and 1.3 million above the 2018 year budget, which was good. Business and licensing fees were, were, were below 2019 year, but 16,000 above the 2018 year-to-date. Sales tax was 650,000 above 2018 year-to-date actual and above 2019 year-to-date budget. Utility tax revenues received year-to-date report as on the monthly finance totals and is 7.4 million below the 2018 year-to-date actual and 16.19,000 below the 2019 year-to-date budget. Dumas Bay Center ending fund balances 1.69 million with a required fund balance reserve policy of 1.5. And, uh, we, this was forwarded to the financial report on November 5th consent agenda for approval, and the score update was presented by our accounting manager, Donnelly. Accounting manager gave a brief overview of the score, ADP, the Average Daily Population, and this was an item for just information and purposes only, no action was taken. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, November 26th at 4:30 PM. That's my, that's my report.
All right, great, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Moore for Lodging Tax.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I am hoping that we'll see a proposal for a name change in the committee. Who knows, maybe it'll be a New Year's gift instead of Christmas gift, but we'll keep at it. Uh, in just about 30 days, December 10th through 15th, the Speedo Junior Nationals will be held at the Aquatic Center. Expecting nearly 10,000 people for the event, it certainly brings some of the finest young swimmers in the nation, possibly future Olympians, to Federway. Additionally, in mid-January, starting January 16th, to be specific, yet another swimming event, the 44th Annual Washington Open will once again be at the Aquatic Center. It brings hundreds of competitors to Federway, from youth to masters. Then the rotation of collegiate swimming and diving championships will also start. The Northwest Conference, including Pacific Lutheran and University of Pigeon Sound, will begin February 13th for about four days. The PAC 12 Championships, 14 days of fun in Federway, it will begin February 26th with the ladies' swimming first, followed by the men's and women's diving championships. Then the men's will begin on March 4th. Then, on March 11th, the NCAA Men's and Women's Diving Championship begins. I do want to thank, uh, the city and the county staff for working so hard to bring this event here. I know there's a lot of collaboration and effort that goes behind putting these events together. It had been in Flagstaff, Arizona, but the, but the pitch to bring it here was successfully made, which is huge. While not televised, you will be witness to many of the athletes that will be trying to get to the US Dive Trials in June and on the US Olympic Team. A great event for Federway. Again, congratulations. A lot of things are happening, and it all is a huge boost to our local economy, whether it's the restaurants, hotels are heavily impacted, and many of the shops here are obviously impacted by this. So, this is, uh, great to see a lot of events happening here in Federway. With that, I will end my report. Thank you.
Great. Lane Deuce, Councilmember Copeng.
Thank you. We had a, a good meeting last night, um, actually, two hours and 15 minutes, so it was packed with, uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of issues that concern our future as a city. But, uh, I think the, there was really three that stood out, but just to give you an idea, there was 13 different items that we talked about last night, 11 of which will go to the consent agenda on November 19th, one of them which will have first reading on November 19th as a new ordinance, and then one that will go to a property, or go to the business agenda. So, again, a lot of the things that we do in the committees will go straight to consent because they've been vetted by the committee members. So, if you want to know more about these projects, you can certainly review, um, the meetings on YouTube now, which is great, as opposed to reading very condensed minutes. Um, but, again, three of the things that I wanted to call out that we talked about were the Brook Lake Connector Trail, which connects Brook Lake property to, uh, the Hylabos, going to be a great access point for, uh, for the school district, for their, their salmon release, but also another access point for people utilizing Brook Lake, and we release, but also another access point for people utilizing Brooklake, and we certainly have big plans for that property going forward. The Citywide Adaptive Signal Control System, we went through the bid results and moved those forward to consent as well. We are getting closer and closer to having state-of-the-art traffic control, which will definitely enhance the ability of traffic to move through our city. So definitely looking forward to that. And then we talked about the City Center Access Phase 1 Environmental Process Update. And again, this is a long ways off now, but we've been talking about this in community outreach, and we'll continue to talk about this at the City Council level as well. But again, we're looking at ways to improve traffic through Federal Way. So again, good things for us to be talking about on the Landy Utes Transportation Committee, and with that, I'll conclude my report.
All right. Now we've got Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our next meeting will be next Tuesday, November 12th, right here in Council Chambers at 5:00 p.m. We'll be talking about, we'll have a monthly report on the PAC, and we'll also have a report from the chief around theft and burglary. We'll be talking about some of those numbers within the city. And then we'll also be talking about panhandling and a review of the panhandling ordinance that we currently have within the city, and, and talking about what updates that may need to have. So next Tuesday, 5:00 p.m., right here in City Council Chambers.
Okay. Councilmember Safa Dawson, anything with the Public Issues Committee?
Not this day.
All right, thank you. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So I have grandchildren who live out of town, and every now and then I find a book that has Washington in it. This is Trick or Treat in Washington, but what is amazing about this is that it says Federal Way, Washington in here. There's a, right here next to Discovery Park, so cool. There's a Christmas book, also Finding Santa, and they mention Wild Waves, so we're national. Very awesome. On our, this City Council's Facebook page, we have information about, for the public, on how to contact the members of the Sound Transit Board, and what their names, addresses are, email addresses, when their meetings are. I also realize that not everyone is on Facebook, and we can get you that information about why you want to be contacting the Sound Transit Board members about the operation and maintenance facility that potentially could be here in Federal Way that we've talked about many times. So if you're not on Facebook and you'd like that information, please let us know, and we can get that to you. And at our next meeting, Councilmember Safa Dawson and I will be here by telephone. We will be attending the National, the annual meeting of the National Foundation of Women Legislators down in San Antonio. But what is pretty special about this next meeting is that both Councilmember Safa Dawson and I will be honored as Women of Excellence. And you didn't know this? Okay.
We did. Yeah, we did. We did, yeah.
So this is, this is an award that is given to women. And it is to, it was established in 2013, and is to, it's for the hard work and dedication of the women leaders from across the country, and the other women in the organization picked us. So congratulations. It's, yeah. So that'll be very exciting, and I will come home with a certificate, so. In the state of Washington, there are only three of us that really attend this association. There is Lydia, myself, and a councilwoman from Edmonds, and this is a great association. What is the most amazing thing to me about this association is there are women political leaders from all over the country, and it doesn't matter if you're a Republican, or a Democrat, or an Independent, no one cares. And when you introduce yourself, you are not introduced as a Republican or a Democrat. You are introduced by your name and your title, and no one cares what party you belong to. And oftentimes, people will tear, tear other people apart. This group of, this, this association, I have found that people build us up. We're there to, to learn from other leaders from across the country, and get some really good ideas from what other cities and other states are doing. And I, I come back feeling refreshed and feeling that what I do is really important and that people really care. So congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay. Let's give her a congratulations. That's great. Okay, citizen comment. We've got, I've got one, well, actually I've got two pink sheets, one to be given in person and one to be read. Actually, the second one will be from Terry Thomas, that's the one to be read. What's that?
It's at the public.
Oh, okay, for the public hearing. I got it. Okay. So Dana Holloway.
My name is Dana Holloway. It was my understanding that the Foreman's Arts and Event Center was to include the Native American Culinary Arts Institute for Education and Job Training, for Employment in Food Service, Catering Services, and Restaurant and Hospitality Operations. I thought this played a major role in securing the new market tax credit funding for the PAC. I have three questions. One, is the city still committed to providing Native American Culinary Art Institute Skill Education and Training in the PAC? And what is the timeline for this to begin? Two, if it is no longer part of the PAC vision, how will that affect the new market tax credit funding that was based on providing that training? And three, if this Native American Culinary Art Institute is still going to happen, shouldn't this be called out specifically in the Spectra contract, as it will impact the availability of the kitchen and other PAC facilities needed for the Native American Culinary Skills Training? I've asked these questions at the June 19th, 2018 City Council Meeting during the review of the Spectra Venue Management Contract. I request an official answer to my question be sent to my email address, and I will provide the city clerk with my written request to make it easy. So I'll give this to Stephanie. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, is, is there anyone else who'd like, oh, Betty Taylor. And as Betty makes her way up here, Stephanie, let's have both, Brian, we'll have all three, Brian Autumn and Tim Johnson, address that question, and make sure we get Dana a comprehensive answer via email. Thank you. Okay, Betty Taylor.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Good evening, audience. Okay, so like about five years ago, not just the city, but the state lost a near-and-dear friend to us all. His name was Roger Freeman. Okay, so he was a former City Council member and longtime community leader who died in the morning after courageous battle with cancer. Roger did a lot of things for the community. He was involved on the Human Service Commission. He began representing in the Federal Way as a member of the city's, city's volunteer human service commission, where he helped lead efforts to organize the community's Annual Martin Luther King Junior Day Event. He was elected to the City Council in 2010. In 2012, he was elected to represent the Federal Way area and the 30th District in the Washington State House of Representatives. And so what I want to say in regard to that is like many, Roger did a lot for us. He wasn't a person that did stuff for himself or to make himself be known, but he did it out the kindness of his heart. I would like to see a street, I would like to see a street named after Roger Freeman. It's my understanding, I hope I'm not wrong, but if someone has, usually if someone has been deceased, that they get a street named after them. So I might be wrong in that, but, but if I can recall this, like people I know that have been deceased, like even Martin Luther King. So, and my questioning to that, the reason why I say that is because, so, not, not to offend anyone, but the reason why I say is because we have, we do have a Veterans Way, and we do have a Pete, we have a Pete, we have Pete Street. I can't pronounce his last name correctly. But I would like to see a street named after Roger Freeman. Somehow, some way, somebody came up with the money and the funds to get a street named after Pete. Some way, somehow, someone came up with the funds or whatever to get veterans' drive. So if you, if people, if you can do that and have that much authority, I would like to see a street named after Roger Freeman. And I would like to see the Council help to make that happen, because it's really important. Roger was important to all of us, not just y'all, but to me, to the city, citizens. And we need to do something to commemorate, in memory of him. It's really important.
All right, thank you, Betty. Thank you. We miss Roger, and thank you very much. He was near and dear. And we'll, Betty, we'll, we'll talk, you know, we have the normal, at the Martin Luther King Celebration, there is a Roger Freeman Award, and it's given out every year where we have a bust for him. But I'm sure there's another, there are other, you know, there are ways that we can continue to honor him and his service in our community. He was a friend everywhere. So, yeah, Martin.
Thank, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Betty, thank you for advocating, I appreciate that, and, you know, I know right now, the Sound Transit, I believe, is having a naming opportunity for the station, and so I've heard that as a possible suggestion as well. So when the link comes public, and I think there may be a public link already, maybe, you know, certainly put any suggestions there, but I'll also work with the mayor as well to see what else we can do to, to continue the legacy and make sure that we, we do not forget our advocate, Roger Freeman. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more public comment? And thank you, Stephanie, you are correct, that pink sheet was for the public hearing on the other matter, on the North Lake Advisory Group. So I don't see any more pink sheets? Okay, all right, thank you. Now, Consent Agenda, these are items A through D. I'll go ahead and read the items, and I'll ask if an item wishes to be pulled, if a council wishes not to be pulled for separate consideration. Item A, Minutes for the October 1st, 2019 Regular and Special City Council Meeting Minutes. October 28th, 2019, Special City Council Meeting Minutes. Item B, Vouchers, September 2019. Item C, Monthly Financial Report, September 2019. Item D, Surplus of Public Works and Parks Vehicles. Council, are there any items you wish to pull for separate consideration? Hearing none. Deputy Mayor, do you have a motion?
I move approval of items A through D on the Consent Agenda.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second to approve all items A through D. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the matter passes. All right, now, we've got a public hearing now for the Special Assessment Role for the North Lake Management District Number 2. At this time, I will open the public hearing. We'll have a staff report from Leah Meyer, Surface Water Manager, Surface Water, Surface Water.
Coordinator.
Yes, coordinator, thank you.
Quality coordinator.
Quality, yeah, water quality coordinator.
One of those. I have a variety of titles in varying lengths.
I know. Didn't we joke one time about?
We did.
Your title on your business card?
The full one is, is wildly long, yes.
Exactly. Okay, all right, thank you.
All righty. Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, Councilmembers, and engaged members of the public. My name is Leah Myrie. I am the Water Quality Coordinator for the City of Federal Way, and I am speaking tonight on behalf of the North Lake Management District, who has been undergoing their renewal process this entire year. This is the last public hearing of this process, and so I will kind of get into the meat of what we'll be discussing tonight. All righty, the policy question before council is, should council approve a resolution approving and confirming the Special Assessment Role for the North Lake Management District Number 2? So to briefly revisit, for those who are unaware, a lake management district is a special purpose district that can be set up, much like an HOA, to gather funds from residents or property owners around a lake to be able to fund those special activities, such as water quality monitoring and treatment of the lake. So the renewal process to date, as I mentioned, you have seen a lot of me here at council and at committee meetings, for this process, we began in the spring with the petition to renew the Lake Management District for another 10-year duration, had the vote over the summer of all of the affected property owners, which did go through, which then brought us to the adoption of the ordinance that formally renewed the Lake Management District for another 10 years. However, we are now here to have a public hearing on the proposed Special Assessment Role, which is basically the money paid by the affected property owners for the district in the event that there would be any objections to that assessment role. So the ordinance that renewed the North Lake Management District did speak to the duration, which is another 10 years for the district, the purpose, which is really to uphold the health of North Lake and to have education and awareness around water quality. The boundary, it has a map of all the affected property owners around the lake, and then speaks to the funding mechanism, which we are speaking about tonight in particular, which are those annual assessments. So the annual assessments, they are billed annually through King County, and then King County funnels the money to the city, and we facilitate the accounts for the Lake Management Districts. All the property owners do pay those who are within the boundary of the LMD, and that is based on property type for how much they pay, and we'll get into that a little more. And then basically, this funding mechanism, it really allows for both short and long-term continuous funding without having to basically solicit donations from affected property owners. It kind of locks in a mechanism by which revenue can be had each year so that we can have ongoing activities for lake health. So how are these assessments calculated, and how does payment occur? And so the assessments are determined with the property type being the baseline, and then each property type has a rate that is based on either the type of property, be it a single-family developed parcel, or potentially lakefront footage. Again, we'll get into this a little bit more, it can be a little complex. And so that equals the annual assessment that is paid by a property owner each year. So annually, in February, City Federal Way staff, myself, basically calculates the assessments. The North Lake assessments are subject to CPI increase based on the Seattle Consumer Price Index. Then we send that to King County, who processes it and sends out the bills to all of the affected property owners, who must pay by May 10th of each year. So all of the property types, so here is a map, I know this is kind of very small, but it is a large area of all the property types that are affected under the Lake Management District. We have, most of these are the single-family residential developed properties. There are also non-lakefront properties that are deeded lake access, just two of those, some vacant properties, commercial property owned by IRG now, and the Department of Fish and Wildlife Public Boat Launch. So the proposed assessment rate structure is as follows. Again, you'll see that the rate can be per unit, as in a single-family homeowner would be paying $125 per year under this rate structure, and for those with lake access will be paying $90. Whereas vacant properties, or the commercial property, is charged per lakefront foot. And so that kind of differentiates between whether that is the single-family residential or whether that's commercial. And then the Department of Fish and Wildlife has just one single annual assessment for their property. So again, I wanted to mention that in comparison to Steel Lake Management District, that does not have a CPI increase each year, these annual assessments are subject to those automatic increases based on the previous year's CPIU. It is not to exceed 5% in any given year, and I kind of wanted to look at the averages over over the past, uh, 10-year duration of the LMD, and over the past 10 years, that has averaged about 1.9% of an increase per year, um, and then over the last five years, that has been increasing a little more, um, to 2.3, but not even reaching that 5% threshold. Um, so this is a little crazy, we're going to go into this, uh, a little bit more detailed here, so, um, basically, I wanted to provide, if anyone had questions, on kind of how the assessments, uh, basically compared year on year, so the first year, here, 2010 of the Lake Management District, um, here are the rates, and we're going to break these down a little bit more too, for more visual clarity, um, but then we also have 2019 for what they paid this year, and then 2020, uh, the proposed assessment. So really, kind of the thing I wanted to focus on, uh, here, is that, uh, really, the proposed assessment is actually, uh, lower than what was paid by affected property owners this year, so it's not going to be something that is egregiously more expensive in the coming years of the Lake Management District. Um, so, uh, the assessment comparisons by property types, so we have single-family developed property assessments, um, so basically, uh, in the blue, we have 2010, so that initial year of the LMD, uh, 2019, so in red, what was paid this year, and then in green, the proposed assessment, and as you can see, again, these are very similar, um, for 2020 of what was paid in 2019, and then for the single-family vacant properties and the commercial properties that are by lakefront foot, um, again, we're seeing some very similar numbers, so again, not a huge jump, um, even though, uh, basically, RCW Code does allow an increase that is much higher than this, but, um, I know the advisory committee wanted to stay within something that was reasonable for all affected property owners, um, and then for the Department of Fish and Wildlife, their property assessment remained at that $4,000 mark. Uh, so, we are here at the public hearing on the assessments that I have just discussed, uh, this public hearing is required by RCW Code to provide property owners with a chance to object to these assessments. Um, also, there was public notice prior to this public hearing through public notices in the Mirror, as well as letters that were mailed to all affected property owners detailing, uh, what their assessment would be in 2020, um, and then the resolution before council for consideration approves and confirms the special assessment role, um, that has been, uh, placed as the exhibit to the resolution, and I do have copies of those, uh, with me if anyone is interested in seeing, um, all of that data. Uh, so then the next steps would be if, uh, council were to approve that resolution, uh, there will be an ordinance to establish the time of payment, interest, and penalties for assessments that I will bring to LUDC, it will go through all of the ordinance readings, and then basically, the last step is, uh, a resolution to create the advisory committee and get those appointments made for the spring of 2020. So the options considered this evening are to, one, approve the proposed resolution approving and confirming the special assessment role for the North Lake Management District Number Two, or, secondarily, do not approve the proposed resolution and provide direction to staff. The mayor recommends option one, and now it is the public comment period.
All right, thank you, Leah. Counsel, any questions? Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. So this started in 2010, for this lake?
Yes, yes.
How was the lake managed before 2010? Were, uh, property owners assessed a fee by the city, or did the city just manage it on their own?
They were not, so actually, a little bit of history, and I actually have a slide on this, so let me pop out of here. Uh, so basically, a lot of the lake stewardship with both Steel and North Lake really began with, uh, King County initiatives, through the King County Lake Stewardship Program that began in the early 90s, um, so a lot of discussions kind of began around there. Oh gosh, I've done so many iterations of this presentation. Let's see here. Oh, here we go, okay, great. All righty, so basically, in the 90s was that King County involvement through the King County, uh, Lake Stewardship Program, and then in 2004, um, there was the Integrated Aquatic Vegetation Management Plan that was created under that by King County, uh, basically, I mean, uh, roughly, um, just about 100 pages of documents about all of the different aquatic species, uh, on the lake, the vegetation species, um, and how, um, they were going to manage those, you know, for some noxious or nuisance, uh, aquatic, uh, weeds that could cause a lot of problems to the intended recreational uses, um, and the health of the lake as well. Um, and then, the, uh, North Lake Steering Committee is the NLSC, and the North Lake Steering Committee was formed that same year in '04, um, and then they actually became part of the city in 2005, and were also awarded the, uh, oh gosh, the AWOMF, um, it was a grant under King County, um, basically to do more aquatic management, and so, and then, kind of through all of that work for those next few years, they decided, hey, Steel Lake has an awesome lake management district that was formed in 2003, so let's go ahead and make one of those too, to kind of create this, uh, short and long-term kind of funding mechanism to have long-term goals for the lake. You're welcome.
All right, counsel, any other questions? Leah, great job, uh, our water quality coordinator with Surface Water Management, thank you very much, great job. Okay, um, citizen comment, we've got a, a typed out comment.
Letter reads, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and audience members, tonight, as the current chair of the North Lake Management District Advisory Board, I want to thank you and all the members of the advisory board, and particularly the surface water management staff of Leah Myrie, Kevin Dew, and Teresa Thurlo, and Terry McNabb of Aqua Technics, for all their time, effort, and great work to make the past year's work successful. We're looking forward to continued success in stewarding North Lake under the new 10-year renewal of the Lake Management District contract. We've been able to keep up North Lake, one of the great gems in City of Federal Way, by keeping the lake extremely healthy and providing the city with great public use asset. Leah is handling all the details of the renewal in the Lake Management District this evening, and will handle the questions which may arise tonight, or secure the answers to those questions and respond to those inquiries if they cannot be answered this evening. Again, thank you all, and we look forward to working with you in the coming years. Respectfully, Terrence Terry Thomas, the second.
Okay, is there, thank you, Leah, is there any more, uh, public comment? Any more public comment on this? Okay, hearing none, uh, resolution approving and confirming the special assessment role for the North Lake Management District Number Two, right.
I'm going to go ahead and, I, I'd like to close the meeting, I move to close the public hearing on the special assessment role for the North Lake Management District Number Two.
Second.
But a motion, a second, to, uh, close the public hearing, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. Counselor, preparing for the main motion.
Yes, I move to approve, approval of the proposed resolution.
Second.
But a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, once again, the main motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, now, uh, the 2019 to 2020, bineal budget adjustment and 2020 property tax rate as required by RCW 35A.34. I'll now open the public hearing, we'll have a staff report from Chase Donnelly, our account, uh, accounting manager in the, um, Finance Department. Chase?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Counsel, tonight, I am here before you, presenting the 2019-20 Proposed Mid-Bineal Budget Amendment, on behalf of our Finance Director. A little bit of background on this adjustment, um, per RCW 35A.34.130, the legislative authority shall provide by ordinance for a mid-bineal review and modification of the bineal budget, and that's why we're here before you this evening. Some additional background, as the original adopted budget was adopted on December 4th, 2018, the 2019-20 budget was amended on April 16th, 2019, and we just had a presentation at FedRAC on the budget amendment on October 22nd, 2019. Some budget factors to give consideration to during this budget adjustment is the fund balance reserve policy passed by council with Resolution 18732, and we're required to maintain the required fund balance or pay it back within the required timeframe. All funds within this budget adjustment are at the required reserve level, level set by council. Some examples of that reserve level are the general fund at 9 million, so the reserve policy requires that the general fund keeps 9 million in reserves within the fund. Currently, as of the end of 2020, the general fund is at 9,0171. Another example is the street fund, it's required to be kept at 500,000 per policy. As of the end of 2020, the balance is 516,823. And thirdly, an example of one of the funds that's kept at the reserve policy is the Strategic Reserve Fund at 3 million, and as of the end of 2020, the reserve policy is at 3 million. Onto interfund loans, the PAC operation has an interfund loan of 500,000, and as part of this budget adjustment, the 500,000 is set to be proposed as forgiven, and therefore paid back. The PAC construction loan, with the payment that is proposed in this adjustment of $1 million from REIT, brings the PAC construction interfund loan down to 5 million, with proposed bonding this year, later this year, and the first debt payment of 550,000 paid for by REIT.
Let me, let me just stop for a second to make sure that that's very clear. The entire cost of building the Performing Arts and Events Center, the balance now, is just $5 million.
That's correct.
We got the $1 million, as we've got reported by, I want to make sure this is very clear, the, the PAC was $32.7 million, so, um, right around there.
Approximately.
So, we're talking about $28.7 million that we have, uh, we've been able to secure funding for, the remaining balance is 500,000. I'd like to call out right now, Ade Irulolo, our Finance Director, who was able to, um, work with the State Department of Commerce, and, uh, finally get them to, um, allocate that $1 million, uh, to us, that had been, uh, previously designated us through the legislature, but we've been working with the Department of Commerce to, to make sure that we could use that money. So what this means is now the balance on the PAC, after everything is said and done up to this date, is just $5 million. That is a tremendous accomplishment by this city to have raised, and to raise essentially $28 million in capital, uh, for a, it's 85% of the total cost of that facility, and I think that's something that we should just make sure that we, uh, recognize, uh, as we go through all this. Go ahead, Chase.
Thirdly, just to give some consideration to the outstanding general obligation bonds that we have on the books for the city, some of those include the community center at 9.9 million, as of the end of 2018, the target property at 6 million, SCORE at 12.9 million, and then PAC at 5 million that we just discussed. On this page, you'll see that this is the actual exhibit that we have proposed before you for the 2019-20 Proposed Mid-Year Amendment, and this lists each of the individual funds, we have 34 active funds, and some of those funds have required reserve levels, so, like I just discussed previously, you'll see the general fund here, here's the 2019 adjustment with the adjustments made to it, here's the 2020 with the ending fund balance of 9,0171. I had spoken to the street fund as one of those items as well, with the balance of 516,000, and then I also have spoken to the Strategic Reserve Fund, you see it right here at 3 million, which is the required fund balance reserve policy amount. These are the rest of the funds, and the ending fund balance for all 34 active funds is 53,108,136. A number of those funds, like REIT, that Ade has identified in the past as a restricted source of funding that can only be used on capital projects, and transportation projects, et cetera, um, and that's included within the ending fund balance that I'm discussing Before you are some of the proposed major changes in the general fund, I'll touch on a few of them, um, to identify them as we look at this spreadsheet. Um, the public defender contract increased by 139,000 for 2019, um, we're proposing to add the copper wire alarm system to Celebration Park and Steel Lake Annex for 58,200. This item is transfer of funding to the PAC operations in addition to the original amount that was budgeted at 453,855, and includes the, um, forgiving of the 500,000 of the interfund loan within this amount, and then replenishing the Strategic Reserve Fund, so this amount, um, is included in order to bring the Strategic Reserve Fund back to the 3 million reserve policy, and just to give some, um, information on that, we had used that fund to purchase the target property, and so we've been able, through this budget adjustment, to bring the reserve balance back up to the 3 million within that fund, so that's an accomplishment to keep all of our funds within the reserve policy. And these, again, are the 2019 proposed major changes within the general fund. On the next page, we have the major 2020 proposed changes for the general fund, with the public defender contract increase, 191,000, rental housing program, 100,000, and community development, and then transfer of funding for PAC operations of 800,000, that we'll discuss a little later. Some of the, um, revenue that's paying for these increases, that was discussed when, um, Councilmember Du Close gave her report, was the increase in community development revenue, um, that has increased, that she had mentioned over 2018, had increased by Some of the proposed major changes in non-general fund, funds, which are the other funds that are outside of the 9 million, so one of the examples that I talked about is the 500,000 for the street fund, um, this is for copper wire theft replacement, 30,000 for the street fund, um, reducing the transfer out from utility tax, because utility tax revenue is coming in slightly lower, and so we're reducing that funding. Um, the council chambers upgrade, you'll see on the next slide that, for 2020, that that moves to 2020 instead of 2019, with some increased costs. Um, payment on PAC interfund loan of $1 million for REIT funding, that can only be used on capital projects, so it's a restricted funding source. Replacement of mobile and portable radios, this has to do with replacement reserves that have already been collected, and so it's not additional money, it's money that just draws down from the fund that we've already collected reserves on. And then for 2020, um, again, we have the reduction in the utility tax that I had mentioned previously, the council chambers upgrade, the first PAC debt payment on the construction bond, when we bond the 5 million, that would be the first payment that would be paid for out of the debt service fund with REIT funding, and replacement of police vehicles.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Counselor Trent?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chase, for your presentation, um, I'm, I'm just curious, on the, um, outstanding general obligation bonds, uh, the community center, the target property, and the SCORE, those three bonds, um, is it possible that we can refinance those bonds, given the fact that right now, the interest rate is very low? Is that even possible?
It's, some of the bonds have a callable, um, timeframe on them, and so I would have to find out when those are callable, um, but I do have the debt service payments for those, but I don't have the interest rates with me, but we could get that information to you, and then identify when those bonds are callable.
Okay, right. Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor Honda? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sephardosson first. Okay, Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you, at the FedRAC meeting, the Spectra folks asked for $1 million for funding for next year's operations, and there's $800,000 in here, I know we discussed that back and forth, so, are they happy with 800,000?
Yeah, so I do have Autumn here to make an additional presentation on that, to talk about the difference between what they're requesting and the 800,000 that we're currently funding within the budget adjustment, and, um, the plan moving forward.
Okay, and we'll, so we'll do that after the rest of the questions, Councilmember Sephardosson?
Yeah, so, um, Exhibit C, I believe, can you actually explain to me the PAC, um, the, um, that line, the, um, under PAC, there, yeah. So where it shows So where it shows 447,382 and then for 2019?
Yeah, so this is the beginning fund balance for 2019. This is total revenue and including transfers in funding from like the general funding utility tax expenditures out, ending fund balance or beginning fund balance for the next year. Revenues and including transfers in expenditures out, and then a zero ending fund balance. So meaning that revenues minus expenditures equals a balanced budget.
So the revenue is from where?
The revenue is from facility revenue generated from the facility as well as transfers in from general fund funding that we would be supporting the PAC with.
So the 500, is that part of?
Yes, the 500 is included within this adjustment to forgive the interfund loan.
Okay, so, okay, wait. So it's the 500,000 plus like ticket sales and everything, is that what?
That's correct. Yeah, ticket sales, different facility generated revenue.
Okay, so it's all projection for 2020, of course?
That's correct.
Okay, so what does it mean when we're giving the interfund loan then? What is the forgiveness?
So an interfund loan was passed by Resolution 18743, and it's not to exceed three years from first draw. And so we gave the PAC a loan of 500,000. And now we're forgiving the loan from the perspective of the Performing Arts and Events Center not being able to pay that back. So the general fund is funding that portion.
Okay.
Counsel, I, I think the council authorized the interfund loan, and I think it's intended to be for a short period of time. Now that it doesn't look like we will be able to recover that within three, three years. So is for the council as part of this budget process, instead of loaning the money to actually consider it funding the Performing Arts Center? So by forgiving this loan, now you are now considering it as part of the number of funding for them. So I think I want to make sure that the council fully understand that the loan that you gave, now instead of hoping to get it back into general fund, we're going to consider, we will consider it as part of the transfer from general fund as part of operation funding for the Performing Arts Center.
Thank you. I do have more questions, but go ahead.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Deputy Mayor Honda?
Adei, can you tell me where the, when we authorized interfund loan, where that money came from?
The interfund loan, usually the way it works, we just grab, because the interfund loan is a, is a vehicle for investment for the loaning fund. Because the loaning fund is now getting interest, which we usually buy bonds, just like the bond that we're selling for SCORE, other entities will buy our bonds, we buy other people's bonds too as a means of investment. So for that 500,000, we gather general fund, fleet, fund, just to make sure we're not affecting their cash operation. And we will credit them with the interest income. For this particular 500,000, we got a portion from, from fleet, a portion from health insurance. And if you forgive them, now general fund will pay those funds back.
Thank you. So for the 800,000 or million, whatever is needed next year, will that also be forgiven?
The 800,000 is in addition to the forgiving of 500,000. The 800,000 is straight up funding them. It's straight up, just like we fund Dumas Bay or Community Center. It's straight up, we are not expecting anything back from that 800,000. And I think Autumn probably will speak more to that. Yes, they ask for about 1.1 million. But by the time we accumulated or estimated all of the revenue for 2020, I don't have enough to fund them for the entire amount that they request. And between myself and the mayor, we concluded that it is, instead of having to defund our own department to fund them, we will fund them for what we can afford, which is as of this point, 800,000. When we amend the budget again in 2020, if there's a revenue opportunity, they will come back and make a request for that difference.
Okay, I have another question, not, not about this, is that okay? So the salary study that has been done, it's not, we haven't had a report on it as a council yet, are the salary increases in here?
The salary study, we have not, we have not gotten the estimate back. As of the time that the mayor was sharing that information with the council, we were going to use the money, the savings from SCORE. The money from SCORE is still intact. And when we get the report from the consultant, you know, we will bring the proposal to you based on the recommendation, the mayor will make recommendation how to spend that 2.1 million. That 2.1 million is still intact. Based on what mayor promised you, that we will come back with, you know, recommendation, and we'll go from there.
But we're hoping not to spend the whole 2.1 million, we're hoping to put some aside, right?
Well, we can't spend it all. Actually, if you've got the 2.1, you've, you've got to make sure, you can't really spend more than half of it. And I've, and I've said this several times, in that you've got to make sure that if you spend all of it, you'd have to then have more revenue lined up because you have the cost of living adjustments for all the, all the employees. So no, actually, one of the things we've been talking about is holding back at least a million of the 2.1. So there's really, we've got to be very careful about the decisions we make. And because we've got to have, there, there just aren't that many different opportunities for revenue. And so therefore, the, the addition of this ongoing money of 2.1 per year has to be handled very carefully because we'd have to find another revenue source to replace that. So we've got to, we're to supplement that.
So is there a general time when we might see that, like?
It's in the works right now, but Adei, what have you been hearing about? And I know that's been, we've been sourcing this out of HR, but what, what do you know as far as when that's?
We had a phone conference with them yesterday. I think they started working and having a report to us probably some, sometimes around March.
March?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, just to explain further what mayor was saying, if we fail to put some money aside, the essence of the salary study is to catch up with what others are paying. If we don't put money aside to be able to pay annual COLA, three years from now, four years from now, we'll be back right here again. Because we would, for employees that may be 10% underpaid, if we bring them up to pay up to 10%, and we're not able to pay them COLA, we will fall behind again because the entities that we're comparing ourselves to will now start paying the COLA. And that is how we got here to start with. And that is what mayor is insisting that we need to be able to do, whatever it is correction that we make now, we're going to make sure we're able to maintain it at least for the next few years.
I have one more question. So the savings that we'll see from SCORE will come over throughout the course of the year, we don't get them all in January. So when we make adjustments to the salaries, that, will that be over the course of the year too because we won't have the funding all at one time?
No, actually, that, this is different than a revenue fund that takes time to start generating. Keep in mind that we were expending this money on a regular basis from the income stream that we currently have. When you remove that obligation, it's all, it's all, it's readily available. So we actually have that, that money readily available in regard to encumbering it, but we want to be careful, obviously, as we just talked about, about leaving a cushion for cost of living adjustments moving forward. So one of the things that we're going to do, just talking about, and when we, as soon as we get the salary survey and work, it's not just a salary survey, it's also a workload study to make sure that we're assessing individuals that are, you know, doing two jobs or more than that. And so what we're going to have to do is really kind of on a, on a triage basis, figure out which positions are the most out of whack, both from a workload and from a financial comparability with the, with the region's employers to make sure that we're not losing people, that we are human capital going out the door. So it'll be a very careful process. But I think this is something that has to be done with, with great care and, and great diplomacy because obviously, you know, people get, I think there's a, it just has to be handled very carefully.
So we could potentially need to hire more people?
I think that that is a possibility. I think that, you know, I think that we've all heard with the presentations that we've had about, you know, for existent, for example, in parks where our neighboring cities in Kent and in other neighboring jurisdictions have sometimes, you know, twice the number of people that we have and that we've been staying at a very static level in public works and, and the added workload that has been provided to them. And I mean, actually, all of our departments, I'm not ignoring you, Brian Davis, I see you over there. And each one of our departments, it's like really, it really kind of reminds me of, of trying to keep 100 balloons down at one time. And, you know, there are a lot of needs. We've got to make sure, and I think that, I think that you've kind of hit the nail on the head here, is that there are many competing interests. Number one, where are people? And what we don't want to do is have people burned out. And I know we've all been in environments and we're aware of environments in which people really have just too much put on their desk and it's asking too much of people. I think that's occurring in several departments. I know this council is sensitive to that issue. But then there's the other issue of, you know, are they out of whack with their neighbors in other jurisdictions and are they going elsewhere? Are they going elsewhere for maybe that dual reason? And so I, well, one of the things we want to do is really start this process, we're not going to fix it in one fell swoop. And I think it's going to be a longer fix, but what we want to do is be intellectually honest about where we're at.
Okay.
I hope that answers the question.
Thank you.
And then as soon as we, I want to commit to the council right now, as soon as we have that, we'll provide it to council, we'll roll up our sleeves and there's, there's going to be a lot of work and a lot of discussions about how we address that and where the priorities are. We're going to have to really talk, and actually, what I did not mention, and I know the folks at the back in the back room, IT. And, and I know the deputy mayor, I know you're very concerned about this as well as I am, in that in today's, in, in today's environment, in the information age, IT is absolutely critical. And when your computer won't turn on, you've got to, or our officers are out in the field and they've got their, their, their cars with computer aided dispatch, they absolutely have to have their computers working. It's a life safety issue. So that's, there are a lot of things to really consider. I think IT is really high up on that list. So just so you know.
Good.
And I, I hope that answers the question. So we've got a couple of questions. Councilmember Moore, Councilmember DuKlo, then Councilmember Sephardosson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if I understand it correctly, what's in the proposed amendment is to add copper wire alarm systems to Celebration Park and Steel Lake Annex, right?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure I understand that.
Just for the record, Councilmember Moore, those are the items that were stolen. And we're just replacing them to make sure the lights are functioning.
So Adei, thank you. You got ahead of me, what I was going to say, and that's, I appreciate seeing this because I understand, what, about, about a month ago, would you say? There were some activities happening at Memorial?
Yeah, Sahale, yeah, Memorial Field, Sahale, Celebration.
Right.
Our city has been hit with well over $100,000.
Exactly.
Of, of wire theft in the past, in the past year.
So I was just going to say, I'm pleased to see that here. You know, if I, and again, this, the words competing interest is kind of on my mind now that you say it.
Yeah.
And that's, there's a lot of importance to, to, to this budget, but I think this is one area that, you know, we need to have at all park systems, I think, because it's such a horrific crime that's happening.
And so insidious, you know, and, and I can actually tell you a little bit more about, you know, we're going to, we're going to catch these folks in the process. But boy, is it really, these things happen in the dark of night. I went out to a couple of different locations with the chief and John Hutton out to Celebration Park. And it happens even on our streetlights, actually even out there, right outside our very city hall. And you think about the, you know, to the 24,000 light poles, I was paying attention, John. The 24,000 light poles around that, around the community. And, and what we've done around the community at our, at our parks, we've actually buried our, our boxes, our electrical boxes in cement. We've literally poured cement on them to secure them. And what these guys will do in the middle of the night is they'll go out to Sahale Park, a Celebration Park, and they'll figure out, they'll, they'll just estimate where the next light pole is and where the cement block is, and they'll just drill down the dirt, grab the wire there, live wire, disconnect it, and then pull out 100 feet of it before anybody knows what's going on.
Yeah.
And how can you, you can't even, you can't even prevent that. But the, actually, we're working on a couple of different anti them, and that's what this is about, but it's an ongoing process.
How many parks is this currently at?
What's that?
How many parks is this currently at? Because I know we have it, I believe we have something like this or similar.
We do. Yes. It is at three different sites, including, and they are the three shared sites. So Lakota, Sacagawea, and Sahale are currently protected with the copper wire alarm system. And we were able to split that cost with Fedaway Schools. And now we're looking at both Steel Lake and Celebration Park to add that copper wire theft prevention. You're welcome. Thank you. Yeah, it is. And oftentimes these guys, what's really interesting is, I'm going to talk about the aluminum wire in just a second, and then we're going to get to Councilmember Sephardosson. They will be able to grab sometimes as much as 300 feet of this, of this cable and then strip off the, or melt off the plastic wrapping of this, of this cable, of this wiring. But there is a movement now to go to more aluminum wiring, which will, I think, in the long run, save us money. But that's a transition that is, it takes some time to, to occur. Okay, Councilmember Sephardosson?
Actually, when we were talking about staffing, I think I'd also like to advocate for economic development to have staffing. But my question goes back to the budget issue. It's around PAC again. And I see a lot of numbers and a lot of moving targets here, so maybe I'll ask you guys later because it's, actually, there's too many numbers for me to figure out what's going on. But when do we expect to not have to subsidize the PAC? I mean, if we're to project, how far out can we project to where it's going to be self-sustaining?
I, I think, you know, maybe if Autumn and Brian wants to step up and I'll...
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. To answer your question, on a year-over-year basis between 2018, when we brought Spectra on, and 2019, they were able to currently save the city about $250,000. That's what we reported in the last city council meeting when they asked for 425. That is with significant looks into the budget and into, you know, where to sharpen their pencil and find cost savings for the PAC. On a trajectory, expecting a $250,000 savings year-over-year through their contract, through speaking with Adei and looking at the numbers, doesn't seem to be a reasonable request. We don't have a true trajectory of where that hard line stops, but currently at the moment, the subsidy will continue to move forward with the goal that it is reduced on an annual basis every single year when Spectra comes to us with their budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have two questions, one related to the PAC, the other one is related to the CDBG grant. The first question is, on the proposed major changes in non-general fund, for 2019, we proposed $150,441 for the PAC operation expense, but in 2020, we proposed $331,492. So, the amount is basically doubled from 2019 to 2020. Can you tell us what that is?
So, that's the increase in expenses over what's already budgeted, and we can pull up Autumn's presentation to identify the difference in expenditures, but that's the additional expenditures for PAC operations.
Okay. Let me ask the second question, and then we can go back to that. The second question is in regard to the CDBG grant. In 2019, we proposed almost, a little bit more than half a million dollars, and then in 2020, we only proposed $243,546. So, we cut that amount in half compared to 2019. What happened there? Did we cut some expenditures?
I'm not aware that we cut any expenditures, but this is to true up what didn't get budgeted during the adopted budget, so I have a listing of the items that were added in 2019 and 2020. They're both fully funded by grant funds, so, for example, in 2019, Habitat for Humanity was budgeted at $103,000, and in 2020, Habitat for Humanities budgeted additional budget at 62. So, it has to do with truing up the numbers for the community development block grants, but I'm not aware of it being a reduction to the community development block grant funds in total.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, should we have the, should we have the PAC go through their presentation now?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that.
I can start the presentation.
Thank you. We've got Brian Hoffman and Autumn here as well, so Autumn?
So, I have two things to cover tonight in our presentation that we prepared for. I'm going to skip to the end here, which answers some of the questions that we've been going over in regards to budget. So, it's a little small here, but to go through the line items side by side, you can see that ticketing sales and fees for 2019 adjusted versus what 2020 is being proposed. Currently, ticketing sales and fees encompasses all revenue that comes into the PAC, whether that be event revenue, concessions, additional advertising, et cetera. So, what Spectra has done is broken that out to show you where revenue streams really truly are coming in and what their projections for 2020 are. Currently, that is $523,846 for ticketing sales and fees revenue, $300,000 in theater and event rental fees, $178,000 within concessions, so that is bar, catering, et cetera, and then $15,000 in advertising, which is truly advertising sponsorships. That is up from about a $2,000 budgeted line item in the beginning of 2019. In addition, their ask for 2020, including internal services from the city, such as cell phones, computers, et cetera, is at $1,209,120. Through conversations post-FEDRAC that we were asked to go through and really try and define where there were differences between the ask and the actual, this is where we came to an agreement. Down in Spectra services and charges, as well as internal services, the total is $2,224,873 is the proposed. You can see that is up from 2019, which was sitting at about 1.5. You can also see that the revenue is increasing significantly year-over-year from 2019 to 2020. With increased revenues, there comes increased expenses, so a lot of those are not frivolous expenses, such as adding, you know, additional staff members or just spending money. It is there are costs associated with doing more shows within the building. Also, within the ask of the $1,209,120, included that $169,000 to do a national and high-level regional campaign for the facility as a whole, to put our name on the map here in Federal Way. You can see in the 2020 C, City of Federal Way proposed, the difference in what Spectra's ask was from subsidy from the general fund, which also, in that 1.2 million, includes some money that's staying here in the city to cover IT and internal service costs, but it went from $1,209,120 down to $659,663, as well as money that stays in the city for salaries and wages. In total, Spectra will be subsidized at the PAC $552,697, as proposed in 2020 right now, versus what they did this year of just under $900,000. With that said, Spectra will be requesting to come back in the spring 2020 amendment to ask for additional funding for their 2020 budget, and at that time, be able to report additionally on revenues and projections that are coming into the facility.
All right.
Questions?
Counsel, deputy mayor Honda.
Will we get a copy of this?
Absolutely.
A written copy?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, any questions? Any more questions? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good work. Brian, do you want to say anything?
We have, we just have one more portion of this presentation.
Okay, go ahead.
And Brian's part of this.
Okay.
So, in the original Spectra contract, there's a manager contribution of $100,000. That money is to be spent on mutually agreeable capital improvements, Spectra transitional costs for a general manager to move to the city. Through the contract with Spectra, those needs haven't been aligned until now, so we are asking today for, should the city council authorize appropriation of Spectra manager contribution funds in the amount of $55,979.96 for the 2019 budget, and then roll over the remaining balance of $44,020.04 for 2020? This money has already been deposited into the City of Federal Way accounts from Spectra. It is to be, again, mutually agreed upon. Currently, there are five line items that have been mutually agreed upon that the PAC is benefiting from. One is new monitors for the Ellingson Bar and Cafe area. This contributes to visibility and ability to market within the main hall of the Performing Arts and Event Center, as well as if you're attending a theater event and you're a couple people back in line, you don't have to wait till you come up to counter to find out what's available and/or what the pricing is. Wanger stage risers currently, and since the PAC has been open, all of our rental clients, if they wanted staging, had to find it from a third party, and we're spending those dollars out there, as well as if we had a performance on stage that we were hosting, take Los Lobos, for instance, or Rain, we had to rent those, and it was an expense to the facility. By purchasing them outright, they now can generate revenue to the tune of approximately $5,000 a year, and also save between $4,000 and $5,000 a year. So, within one year, they're pretty close to a return on investment for them. The Genie Lift, a contract was entered into in August of 2017 with Northwest Equipment. It was for $558.03 per month and was paid monthly by the city for 25 months. That equals approximately $13,950.75. In that time, we could have purchased almost two Genie Lifts outright, so when Spectra came to both myself and the Parks Director to purchase that outright with an agreement with Northwest Equipment, it was approved that that was a positive use of the funds from the manager contribution. In addition, there is culinary equipment within the kitchen facility, such as pots, pans, plate covers, et cetera, smallwares, that they would like funds appropriated for, with the ask that we come back to FedRAC to give you specifics onto where those specific items will come into the building. And then finally, for 2019, Spectra transitional costs are approximately at $20,000. The reason this did not come up in 2018 is because Brian did not officially move to Federal Way till about one month ago, so we are seeing those costs now. 2020 manager contribution funding, we are asking that $44,020.04 be appropriated for use. Currently, the facility has a home washer and dryer, which does not keep up with the needs of the facility between linens and towels, et cetera. They need to purchase a commercial washer and dryer. With that said, that will help them save what they are currently renting linens and towels, because they don't have the facilities necessary to wash those. Again, with the understanding that after appropriation of these expenses, we would come back in January at FedRAC and give specifics on three high-level quotes and what specific models and et cetera will be moved forward. Plan of action, again, three of these items have been purchased and are going to be operating in the facility. Two, we will be back at the next FedRAC to give specific details, and then two, we'll be back in January to give specific details on.
All right, deputy mayor Honda, and then councilmember Moore.
Do you have the staff to wash?
We do.
You do?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have any more staff?
No, absolutely.
All right, councilmember Moore.
So, I know you've talked about the savings, you know, like as opposed to renting or going somewhere to get something washed versus buying.
Absolutely.
I'm sure you've done the research, and I'm confident of what type of savings it could be.
Absolutely.
Could we get like an email in that? I'd like to see the more detailed costs.
Yeah, I'd be happy to email you, just on a high-level perspective. We own the linens at the PAC. They were purchased approximately a year and a half ago. To wash those and send them out costs as much as one linen costs, per linen, so currently that's why they are renting from a separate company. I'll send you specific...
It's 26 bucks.
Yeah.
To get one, one linen washed, to get one piece of linen washed with what the PAC ordered, it's $26.14, and it takes approximately 10 days to do that. And you multiply that by 10 or 30, because we can potentially seat for 300 people, that's a pretty significant amount of money that is going out the door, so to speak.
But yes, we will email you.
Yeah, I think it'd be kind of good to have the details, like year or six months, or, I think it'd be kind of helpful information, and this is kind of a silly question, because I think I know the answer to this, but I know that as an executive director myself, I look at the best cost, the best places to buy things. Clearly, you guys have looked at three different places, and you've, what we see here is the best price. Is that what I'm understanding?
So, currently, the pricing that you see is approximate from the preliminary research that we have. The goal would be that over the next month and a half before January's FedRAC, that we finalize those three quotes and find the best cost with Spectra's buying power, and then present those to you at the January FedRAC. You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions?
Mayor, just so that the council fully understand, the $54,000, $44,000 that Autumn just presented, when we sign contract with Spectra, they promised to give the city $100,000, with the assumption that that $100,000 is good for the next 10 years, and with the amortization of $10,000 per year. So, if we spend this $100,000, and the city were to cut the relationship with Spectra next year, that means we will owe Spectra $90,000. So, but it's money that they gave to the city anyway, but it's supposed to last 10 years, and with the assumption that if we were to terminate our relationship with them before that 10 years, we will have to amortize that $100,000 over 10 years. So, it is their money that says that we can use it to enhance Performing Arts Center, but nonetheless, they gave it to us, and the council needs to authorize the use of it.
All right. All right. Anything else?
The only thing is, in order to appropriate the money, we just need a council vote to appropriate that money, per the policy question in the ask.
Okay, well, I don't think that we're doing that tonight, are we? That's not on the agenda.
No, that will be in the ordinance that was presented to FedRAC that will come to the council on the 19th. If you approve what they are asking, it will be amended in that ordinance that will be presented to the council on the 19th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, is there, that's the presentation. Are there any citizen comments? Any citizen comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing? Councilmember Ducllo?
I move to continue the public hearing on the proposed 2019, 2020 biennium budget adjustment and 2020 property tax rate to the November 19th, 2019 regular council meeting. Second?
All right, there's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matter, or the matter is now continued to the next council meeting. Council business, purchase of a replacement sidearm mower. First of all, a staff report from E.J. Walsh, Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. So, the policy question that's before you tonight is, should the city council authorize staff to purchase a replacement sidearm mower in the amount of $175,209.92? So, as a little bit of background for you, the sidearm mower was included in the 2020 budget for replacement that was previously approved, and the collected amount matched the, or the appropriated amount matched the collected reserves amount of $105,454. The sidearm mower is used for all non-maintained grass areas, so it's not used in areas like the city core or the, you know, manicured grass. Where it is used is, for example, if you're familiar with Southwest 330th, where it turns into 10th Avenue Southwest, between First and Campus, kind of going up and over the hill there where there's the brush and the trees, this is the mower we use to maintain that. Similarly, 364th, south of Todd Beamer, where there's all the trees that overhang the road down there that are constantly hitting school buses, this is the mower that trims back those bushes and trees to height of 14 feet above the road. So, it was slated for but, for replacement in 2020, and we started working with the state to purchase it through the state purchasing contract, and they made us aware of the lead time associated with that, and that's why it's here on the, on the business agenda for you tonight, as opposed to going through a more standard process of a committee to amend the agenda. And what that boils down to is if we notify the purchasing authority by November 10th, we will have this machine in mid-January. If we do not, and delay this until basically anytime after November 10th, we will not see this equipment till the end of March at the earliest, or more realistically, April, and that just has to do with manufacturing lead times. As you may or may not be aware, 364th is already in a condition that the school district's requesting us to trim back trees to allow the buses to do that. We don't have the equipment to do it right now. Our mower is in need of approximately $50,000 worth of repairs, and with it being slated for replacement in 2020, it does not make sense to invest $50,000 of capital money for us to surplus it in a year, and frankly, the mower has bigger problems than that. So, that's, that's why we're here tonight. This is also not a piece of equipment you can readily rent, and this is the time of year we use it. We use it more in the fall and winter than we do in the summer, when the leaves are not on trees to go out and trim. So, all of our maintenance work that we would typically doing, be doing with this, and this is a piece of equipment both Public Works and Parks uses, we can't do right now. So, we are in a holding pattern, and basically just accruing requests for trimming as we receive them. So, as far as funding it goes, the positive, I am not here tonight to ask for any new money. I'm not here to ask for any encumbrances of the general fund. What we are asking for is to, to use the, and this is common practice within the fleet fund that we do, is the surplus of the existing sidearm mower that was slated to go in 2020 to auction through the state, and we use DES to do that. We will take the value of that surplusing of the current mower and apply that to the purchase of this new mower on top of the $105,000 that's already allocated to it. It did... purchase of this new mower on top of the 105,000 that's already allocated to it. Additionally, Public Works surplus trucks 8228-1, 8251-1, 8250-1, and as Councilmember DuKlo already mentioned, we went to FedRAC earlier, actually, I guess the end of last month, not earlier this month, and surplus truck 121-1, which is a truck that's in worse condition, it's not really drivable at this point, 28228-1, so we will actually be surplusing truck 121-1 through the state process. We've replaced all three of these trucks within our existing budget without using that surplus value. So, what we are asking is to use the surplus values to supplement the budget, to get up to the actual state contracting price of this vehicle, of this piece of equipment that we need. The balance of these will be from existing funding within the Streets Operations account. So, there's an actual breakdown of the costs. So, the reserves that are already in the budget is 105,454. The combination surplus of all that equipment I just listed is approximately 49,500. Within the Streets Operations, we have some savings within 2019, namely because we couldn't find enough temporary staffing. So, we are using money that is already within the Streets budget, so again, no impact to the General Fund, no new funding. To get to that total actual replacement value of 175,209.92, that we actually need to replace this piece of equipment. So, the options before you tonight are to authorize us to purchase it, to move ahead with this acquisition, or to not, and if, if it's not, knowing that we will not be able to do that required maintenance and provide direction. Mayor recommends option one, and I am here for questions.
All right, council, any questions? All right, and.
I do.
Deputy Mayor, do you have?
I move to authorize staff to purchase a replacement sidearm mower in the amount of 175,209.92.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Okay, ordinance is second reading and enactment. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 768, encouraging investments in affordable housing and supporting housing through sales tax in accordance with laws of 2019, Chapter 338, Substitute House Bill 1406.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson, do you have a motion?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Council reports, Councilmember Safadossen.
I don't have it. Oh, I was at a mental health first aid training all day Saturday, and it was really useful and helpful, because a lot of times, we don't understand or recognize mental health. And the, the purpose of this training was not really to diagnose, but at least to know how to de-escalate and understand people who are dealing with mental health. So, just wanted, it was really good and helpful, and it was worth the eight hours that I spent doing it, so. And that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just a quick one. The Youth Action Team is having an open house for the new space that has just been constructed. So, it's next Thursday, 11:14, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., and the, it should go up probably on social media, but the full council will get an invite to that. But we'll have a ribbon-cutting, food and refreshments, and also a tour of the space and the vision for the, for the organization. So, that's next Thursday, the 14th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Trent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Part of our outreach program to reduce property by 50% by 2025, the office, the SHS office here will have a caseworker located at senior housing, maybe half-day a week. Currently, we send our staff to the day center half-day a week, but we are gonna send another caseworker to the senior housing here in Federalway, I believe, starting on November 13th. And then we are working with Federalway School District, so that we can send our staff to local high schools, so that we can do more outreach and make sure that we can connect people with, with the benefits. So, this is part of our outreach program, and I'm hopeful that we will have a positive outcome in the city. The other thing that I want to share is, I will not be here in person for the next council meeting. I would try to be here via the telephone, but we still have to work out, how is that gonna work? Because I don't want to, of course, incur a huge amount of long distance for the city, but we'll, we'll try to figure it out. The time zone is not the issue. There are 17 hours difference between here and by that time, I will be in Korea. So, timing-wise, it's not, it's not the issue, it's just the, the phone connection might be a challenge, but I'll try to, to do my best to, to participate in the meeting. And if I could not do that, then I would just want to take this opportunity to wish the mayor, council members, and staff, and people in Federalway a happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. All right, Councilmember Copeng.
We, we're a big city. We are the ninth-largest city in, in the state of Washington, and, but we're still managing to keep a small city feel, a lot of things we do. And a couple examples of that, that were really encouraging to me, were the, the flash mob that was already talked about, that occurred at the Federalway Farmers Market. But again, first annual, we're already looking at, or they were already talking about, I say "we," like I've appropriated, I haven't. It's a, it's a, the, the group that's been involved in this, Anna and Craig Patrick and all, and DeMile, blanking on the first name, I don't know why, but anyway, Kim, Kim, thank you, Kim DeMile, they really worked very hard to create a, an event for our city, and it, it went great. I think it's the first of anything. You can have high expectations, and quite frankly, they did, and they had a lot of great participation, and in the end, it turned out very well. So, definitely looking forward to seeing it again. We also did what I hope is the first annual trunk-or-treat event at the Federalway High School. Again, we had a number of community groups involved in creating a trick-or-treating experience that was safe, and it was very well-attended, and I think it was just a great, another great example, the community coming together. These are, these are good things, I think, that really do bond us together as a community, and again, these were generated organically, and I, I couldn't be more excited about seeing success being built on this way, with other people coming up with great ideas to engage community members and create that community within Federalway with traditions that, as a young city, we don't have. The other thing I want to talk about was, I went to reception at the, for the Master Builders in Taquilla, and the reason I mention that is because we're on the 19th floor of the Hotel in Urban. And on the 19th floor, which is the top floor of that particular building, I had a great view of Mount Rainier, certainly, down the valley, and the valley as a whole. But it really inspired me at that point to think about, what would a 19-story building look like in Federalway, and what would the views be like? And, you know, that is a reality that's gonna come to Federalway, and we're not only gonna be able to see a beautiful mountain, but we're gonna be able to see the sound, we'll see the Cascades, the Olympics. It'll be very attractive. So, again, growth is coming to Federalway, we know that, and I just thought, I just, I got a little taste of it last week, when I went to the Hotel in Urban in Taquilla, and I think it's, it's gonna be a good thing. So, anyway, look forward to that. And last thing, Center Stage did a phenomenal job with the Hound of the Baskervilles, and they've got their annual panto, which is, is gonna be Robin Hood, it's gonna be from November 30th to December 22nd. Those shows can sell out, so if you're interested at all in what Center Stage is doing, I think the energy there is fantastic. I think both Angela Baylor and Trista Duvall have done a very good job in creating a high level of, of interest and energy around the arts here in Federalway. And again, that's our little theater troupe, and they keep, keep moving forward. So, I'm excited about those guys, and look forward to great continued season with Robin Hood as the next show. And that includes my, my, whatever.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. You know, let's see. I think the only thing I want to say is, congratulations. It's election night. Congratulations to Deputy Mayor Susan Honda, and congratulations to Councilmember Mark Copeng for their, for them getting re-elected, and for Councilwoman Safadossen, I know you had a very difficult race. I was kind of sweating up a little bit, but you know. So, sincere congratulations, look forward to continuing to work with you guys, and yeah, we'll see what happens in position seven, so. I, what? Oh, so with that.
Deanie, will you stay?
Yeah, Deanie, will you stay? I support that comment. So, with that, I'll just end my, my report. So, sincere congratulations.
Councilmember DuKlo.
I have been saving up all year, and I'm gonna wait until my last council meeting, and I'm gonna sit here and talk forever. So, until then, good night. Thank you all, Ed.
All right, Deputy Mayor Honda.
Well, I'd like to add congratulations to Linda Kuchmore. It appears that she would carry that seat. So, I'd like to talk about the Veterans Program on Saturday. This is something we've been working on for quite a while, and it is sponsored by the Quanis Club. There used to be two in Federalway as of October 1st, there's one Quanis Club in Federalway, so we just call it the Quanis Club now. It is from Sat, on Saturday, November 9th, from 3:00 to 5:00 at Todd Beamer High School, sponsored by the Historical Society, the Quanis Club, and this year, the Seroptimus Club is providing cookies, coffee, and water. Our keynote speaker is State Representative Kristen Reeves, and we're gonna have a junior ROTC cadet speak. You probably all know her, her name is Katie, she's around me a lot. She's gonna speak about the future and the past and the present. The Corral will be singing. What is really cool about this program, and what I really want people to, to understand is that the junior ROTC programs at Federalway and Todd Beamer do a lot of work on this, and they put a lot of these things together. Please come and support them, and please come and support the veterans in our community. We honor each and every veteran that walks in the door with the flag and a thank you, and it's really important that we support our veterans here in Federalway. So, please come Saturday, 3:00 to 5:00 at Todd Beamer, and help support not only our veterans, but our, our younger people, those interested in serving in the military. Thank you very much.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.